Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Temple City Council. We're Thursday, March the fifteenth. If you please rise. Reverend Pat Dietrich, pastor of First Lutheran Church, excuse me, Pat, will lead us in invocation. And then Randy Watts, the director of the Ashton Van Aulman Foundation, will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Oh, Lord God, we thank you for this amazing day, for the sunshine and the rain. It's such a blessing. We pray that you will continue to bless us with favorable weather. I thank you for this community, a community that cares for the weak and for the sick, for the poor and for the homeless. We pray that you will continue to bless us with those agencies and organizations that reach out their hands and extend your heart to them. Now, Lord, I pray for this city council as they make decisions and as they form the ideas that will have favorable government, we pray that you will lead them and guide them. We pray that you will bless them as they look forward and recognize those with handicaps such as autism this night. Bless us and keep us, Lord. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Can I answer? Um, you can just, okay. There's one. We place the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Dietrich. Thank you for the prayer. Next item on the agenda is a public appearance. This time we receive comments from Mr. Kenneth Wilcox in A-1 Fencing and Welding Company regarding possible amendments to the existing Unified Development Code to allow metal fences. Uh, Mr. Wilcox? Yes, sir? Please go come forward. You can do it fine. Yes, sir, please.
Yeah, my name is Kenneth Wilcox. I've been a resident of Temple for about five years and I'm gonna have a home up on the north side, twenty-four sixteen North Paul Street. And I'm here because I'd like to see if I get what I call fence ordinance changed. I wanted to install a new fence here about a few months ago and it was defined as a rental fence and the ordinance restricted because called out corrugated metal. You know, I saw it was restricted, I couldn't put it up. I decided to do something else, but I'm down here and I think it needs to be changed. So I'm down here to see if I can get the ordinance changed so some metal fence is acceptable. No, I'm not saying all, but some is acceptable. Now, this is a picture of a metal fence. I just want, sorry, let me show you what I'm showing you tonight. That shows what I call a beautiful fence, okay? Not only is it beautiful, okay, it's made to last, i.e. I have a wooden picket fence I put up now that I can't get anybody guaranteed past five years if I try hard. It might last fifteen years, maybe, okay? Once is guaranteed for forty to forty-five years to stay up, okay? And it's metal, it's painted, it stays painted for forty to forty-five years. So I think a fence like that is as good as a wooden fence. And the way your, uh, wheels are right now, that's rejected. That fence is rejected for the city of Temple. So that's why I'd like to get changed, okay? Now, I have just one or two other pictures.
Of the metal?
Uh, the one with the background.
Of the metal or the wood?
I don't know if it goes down. I don't paint the picture. Yeah, that. This is, uh, this came from the company that was willing to install a metal fence, okay? And there's a forty-five year paint warranty on that fence. So you should put it up, it stays up, okay? And it's meant to stay up for a period of time. It means that I, as a homeowner, don't have to worry about replacing it or fixing it every ten to fifteen years. The fence is still to be replaced, okay, then maybe ten years. Now, I don't know if, depending on, see the fences, see the picket fences, that's about what they last, you know, eight, ten, fifteen years, then you got to change it. And I would try to get it so I could fix it, so I probably went through that. And I think the pretty fence, anyway, this fence is perceived as definitely guaranteed for it. So that's the second reason why I see for changing to metal fence. Now, I'm not saying all metal fences, okay, but I agree. I'm just saying this particular standard of metal fence, okay? Because I went over and saw some of these installations over in the between area and the pretty fence, we were showering. And I'd like to see the ordinance get changed here in the city of Temple. That's why I'm here, more than anything else. Any questions?
Questions, Coach?
Just for the matter of it, I'm gonna point out, two of the people that work at this, when we group downstairs, that decides whether it's gonna go or not go, they both want to like to have a fence, but they, the one person in the ordinance, who shows up and says you cannot have a corrugated metal fence, that's what's gotta get changed. I think that's on two of them.
Which way you have any questions?
Your right is about what ordinance is.
You have my words or a picture?
Words.
Okay. Well, I'm sure staff knows where it is in the ordinance.
Yeah, and I just wanted to point out, uh, where it says, this is, no, this is the one. Where it says, the little place that I know where I got rejected, okay? Where it says, uh, corrugated metal fence, start at the bottom of this one, all the way to the bottom. Keep moving. No, it's not that one. No. For this document, it's for, manified specifically for fencing, such as fibers, mason bodies, plantake fibers, painted by, or corrugated steel panels. That's what rejected it. Corrugated steel panels is what rejected this metal fence. As it's written here, that's why I wanted it changed. I, uh, I think the fences are good fence and it should be allowed in the city of Temple. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Absolutely. Any questions?
Yes.
Good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, sir.
Did you miss the gun back there?
That's me.
Okay. Right on my head. Yeah, maybe I'm with you, that's why I went.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilcox. Uh, next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment. Citizens who desire to address the council on any item may sign up to do so prior to the meeting and public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes, no discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. Uh, first, we have signed up, our fire chief, Lonzo Wallace. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, council and city staff. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to, uh, it's my privilege to bring before you tonight Deputy Chief Francisco Corona, who is retired from the Temple Fine Rescue after thirty years of service. And Deputy Corona has certainly been, you know, great for the, for the department, for the, for the city and for all the citizens that are here. Deputy Corona has successfully competed against fifty-two applicants through a nationwide search and has been selected as the city of Belton's next fire chief. Uh, I'd like to thank Deputy Chief Corona for his many years of service to the city and congratulate him on his next chapter in his line. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
I'd like to share part of my time with Chief Corona by the way.
Mayor, council, citizens, firefighters, staff. It's been, it's been a lot of fun and there's no way that I can pay back what I learned with the city of Temple. So, um, I will always remember this. My first job as a firefighter and I will always, you will always have a special place in my heart and my family's heart. So thank you, thank you very much. I look forward to be with Belton and maybe we'll work together and help, continue to help and, helping other citizens. Thank you.
Well, I have plenty of time to, to recognize you later, but at this point, all we can say is best wishes to you, good luck, sir.
But we'll be, a reception hall Saturday, March the twenty-fourth at one-thirty PM in Central Fire Station. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Uh, next individual sign up to speak, Mr. Tom Olson. Mr. Olson?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Tom Olson. I live at, uh, this has been at Scott Boulevard proper, you're gonna, you're fixing me to rezone or do something with, so I don't know if this is a good time to speak or not, but I live on Scott Boulevard, my address is twenty-two five Scott Boulevard, so living on Scott Boulevard, a little concerned about traffic and speed of traffic and anything that goes from a single family or a two SF to a commercial is a little concern for me. Um, okay, that's, that's basically, and plus, I guess I'm getting old, I'm getting like an old fart, so I like the way they are. And it's vacant land and I really like it right now. Okay, the second thing is, um, I think it's a solution for a problem and I'm trying to figure out what the problem is. As I understand it, there's a, a parking issue over at the summit and maybe somebody could, or at some coming time, he can explain it to me. And, and so we need to do a land swap and, and do the land swap, uh, I guess we need to rezonate. And if that's the case, I'm not sure if that's really a problem or not. I go to the summit quite frequently and seems to be plenty of parking over there. I notice a lot of, you know, four wheel, big old pickup trucks like to park on the grass across the street. Um, I'm not sure if that's the reason we're doing this or not, so I could say I'm concerned mostly about the speed and number of traffic, cars and trucks on Scott. But I'm also a little bit wondering what's the solution, what's the solution to the problem? What is the problem? So I guess I'm registering my objection to it at this point.
Thank you very much, sir. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. If Mr. Randy Watts would come forward, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor, there was, um, a second. A-1 Fence and Welding Company had also, um, applied for a public appearance. Is there someone here to say?
Oh, oh, my apologies. I, okay. My apologies, I thought you were finished.
This is Ronnie Morgan, uh, sales manager of A-1 Fence and Welding, uh, sixty-three eleven South Fourth Street, Clean Texas. These metal fences he's talking about, uh, I put them on three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar homes. And unlike Mr. Wilcox here, I can't understand why we got turned down, uh, to do this metal fence when we have a forty-five year warranty, but it's not changed color or anything. But back to his side, the bottom line, anytime you have wood, you got maintenance, you know? And I do this for civil health and heights, been doing it for, uh, deep, ten, fifteen years, uh, City of Clean, City of Cops, and, you know, today alone, I sold thirty thousand dollar worth of metal fencing. Because folks that run up in the age, they don't wanna mess with the fence anymore. So this is what we're trying to get changed. It's attractive, you seen it with the columns, he not really want columns, but willing to match color his house and the trim. And, um, if there really is a nicer fence, and we're just trying to get y'all to look at that and maybe consider letting us do that in the city. That's all I had to say.
And did you say your name?
Ronnie Morgan.
Ronnie Morgan. Yes, sir. Mr. Morgan, thank you. I apologize, I thought Mr. Wilcox and the A-1 Fence and Welding weren't the same, so, okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Wilcox? No, thank you, sir. Mr. Morgan, I'm sorry. Okay, now to, to the proclamation. Mr. Watts? Anyone else that you would like to come forward? Have a special recognition and proclamation?
Sorry.
And give you an opportunity to tell us about your organization and, and, uh...
It's my pleasure to offer this proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas autism is fast becoming epidemic with no known cause in cure and it changes large forever. Money and time involved in treating autism is staggering, not to mention the emotional pull of every single day. Whereas in two thousand and seven, the United Nations adopted a resolution naming April second as World Autism Awareness Day. And Autism Speaks, the world's largest autism science and advocacy organization, created Light It Up Blue to shine a light on autism during the month of April. And whereas last year, over one thousand eight hundred iconic landmarks all over the world turn their lighting blue, this year, homes and buildings all over the Temple area will be changing their lighting to blue and will celebrate Light It Up Blue for the first time. Now therefore, I, William A. Jones III, Mayor of the City of Temple, do hereby proclaim Monday, April the second of two thousand and twelve as Autism Awareness Day and also proclaim the month of April of two thousand and twelve as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Temple, Texas. And I encourage all citizens to observe this day by wearing blue, eating blue, drinking blue, and the month by changing out light bulbs to blue and together we can make the whole world blue. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the city of Temple, Texas on this the fifteenth day of March of two thousand and twelve. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you. Let you tell us a little bit about your organization and what the symbology of the blue and, and with your organization.
All right, so thank you. First off, I will, uh, on behalf of the Ashton Development Foundation, Autism Speaks, I wanna thank Mayor Jones, City Council for, for this notoriety. The lady standing to my right is Manu Van Aulman. It is her son, Ashton, to whom our foundation was named after. Uh, we're brand new, uh, we were accredited, uh, foundation, nonprofit organization, only in September of last year. The Light It Up Blue is a new process and a new procedure for us. So with Mayor Jones' City Council's help, next year, uh, we strive to get as many of the city buildings externally lit up with the blue. You asked about the, the connection with the blue. Well, just like the Heart Association, there's this red, uh, breast cancer wear, this is pink, autism is the light blue. So once again, I would thank Mayor Jones, City Council for allowing this and presenting us with this.
You're welcome, Mr. Watts. Thank you. And you'd like to say, tell us about your organization?
I just really appreciate, um, the opportunity to get the word out there and to bring awareness to Temple. Uh, we've had a lot of trouble, my son's twelve now, and we've done, um, we're in a lot of trouble trying to get him to where he is today. At least now I can get him to go to the movies and go through life and go to school without having meltdowns and, um, you know, so I'd like to just get more things happening in Temple, maybe groups get together, organizations, because one out of every hundred and ten child is autism and there's not too, too much going on around here. We can go to Austin and find certain things to do, so I just really appreciate you guys doing this proclamation and maybe we can get a little bit more things going on around here for all of our little babies, so thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item five. All items listed under this section, consent, are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council on any item, it may be removed from the consent agenda, a request of any council member, and will be considered separately. Uh, council, this is item five, A through Q. Are there any items that you wish to be removed, uh, from the consent agenda for voting purposes, presentation, or individual consideration? And if there is not, then I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve the consent agenda, item five, letters A through Q. If you go for the discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Item number six is a second reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from General Detail District to Plain Development Multi-Family One on Lot Ten, Block One, Elmwood Edition located at forty-eleven Brooklawn Drive. Ms. Spear?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This particular applicant requested today that we can open the public hearing and continue the table into the April fifth meeting, as the council so pleases.
Okay, all right, well, if that's the case, we do not need a presentation on this item and so council, I entertain, uh, well, let me open the public hearing first, um, because we're out posted for the public hearing, so we'll, we'll have to have that again as we did last meeting. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Uh, council, your pleasure, on the request to table the item.
Motion to table. Second.
Motion to second, table item six, uh, regarding the rezoning, uh, on Brooklawn Drive. And there's no objection. Question, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item seven is a first reading in public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption with more than seventy-five percent revenue from alcohol sales in an existing bar and restaurant on five point six eight acres of, uh, lot five thousand and eight city addition, commonly known as forty-nine eighty-four West FM ninety-three. Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular conditional use permit, um, was a request by staff of the applicant. There's currently a conditional use permit on the property to allow for the sale of alcohol, but it's less than seventy-five percent revenue. And this was a new business going into an existing site that would work for the sales, but we wanted to make sure that when her state license for a private club is up for renewal, if there is an issue with the amount of revenue that she's taking in from alcohol sales, we would be covered from the city's perspective and from her perspective. And so we contacted her and requested that she request the CUP, she didn't comply. Um, they have been open since mid-January and will be able to continue to do so even if the revenue sales that are expected do change in the future. These are some images of the properties surrounding this property. This is the, it used to be the ranch and now it's Bose Farm, she's relocated from We sent out four letters, we did not receive any letters in denial, we sent, we received one in approval of the CUP across the street. Staff does recommend approval of the CUP request. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this on February twenty-first and they also recommended approval seven to zero. The applicant is here, if you have any specific questions with her, but I'm happy to answer any questions, please.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Council, any questions, comments on the end? We're being known, this item requires a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion to second for approval of the restated conditional use permit for the ranch. There's no further questions. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item eight, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing amendment to Plan Development Ordinance two thousand and one dash two seven seven eight, Plan Development ninety-two for O-one and specific uses, originally approved July fifth of two thousand and one to allow a fenced contracts, contractor's storage and equipment yard on approximately point nine one acres of land, being a part of the Mexico Moreno survey abstract fourteen, city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, more commonly known as thirty-eight oh two South Fifth Street. Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular piece of property was rezoned to the PD in two thousand and one. It's a former residential property and it still maintains its residential appearance and feel. Uh, the owner that changed the zoning to the PD in two thousand and one is still the same owner and he is currently using it as a contracting office. The office two, the office one designation allows that use, but he's been parking in the back some of his contractor's equipment. It was noticed by code, uh, code enforcement, he came in and talked to planning about some options that he had to address the situation. These are the three options that he were, was given, the first being the, the easiest in our minds, but not so much for the applicant, was to remove all of the onsite construction material and vehicles. The second option was to request a commercial zoning, which allows the construction yard by right. And then this third option was to open up the original PD just to allow this very specific use and to put conditions on it that may make the city staff and council happy with the use. And that's the option that he chose, um, and so that's the option that's being presented before you tonight. These are some images of some surrounding properties. There's north, there's residential structure, just to the south, there's commercial zoning and some retail use. Then to the west, there's the spine trail, the city spine trail, and to the east is the, it's O-one as well, but it's zone, it's, um, Texas Agro, or Texas A&amp;M Land, and it's slated for...
Which one, I'm sorry?
It's A&amp;M property.
Okay.
But it's slated for T-MED in the future. Right now, it's zone O-one. This is the site plan of the property that he currently has. The green area is the proposed twelve thousand five hundred square foot yard that he is proposing that he would fence in. So this is where the equipment and materials, if it were to be onsite, would have to be placed. And so there would be a fence proposed around that entire yard. He does have a paved entryway already onsite and he has a paved area in the front as well on South Fifth Street. This is the notification map, we sent out seven, uh, we received two denials, one from the multifamily owner's catty corner to this, just northwest, and then from the single family owner to the north as well. We did recommend approval of this with some stipulations that the attached site plan had to be followed. The residential structure and nature of any future residential structures on the property had to match with that, with the pitch roof and the masonry requirements. We also required that the contractor's yard had to be fully enclosed and that any existing trees must be retained. There's quite a few very nice large trees on this site and so those would be retained as well as part of this PD amendment. When we took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some discussion, um, there were further limitations that were recommended to you all to consider. The first being that all employee parking being located in that fenced area, so there would be no employee parking allowed in that curb driveway that we saw on South Fifth Street. That any lighting that was to be added would be, would maintain the residential character and that the screening fence would be eight foot wood fence rather than the six foot. The P and Z with these conditions did recommend approval seven oh. I do not see the applicant in the audience, but I do see, um, some people that did spoke against this at our P and Z meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have though.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Council, questions, comments prior to the public hearing?
Well, I'm just wondering about the type of, um, construction vehicles that were planned to be there. I mean, this isn't in a, um, area where it is growing, T-MED will be there and potentially other retail businesses, so I'm just wondering what that would look like.
What he has had on site before was a work trailer, a dump truck, he did have, um, a bulldozer at one time, he's had a variety of different, he does run construction business, so he does have a variety of equipment. Part of this PD... Part of this PD, you could limit the amount of vehicles and the type of vehicles and the type of materials that could go in that yard. That's certainly open for an option.
I can see that as an office, I don't see it as a place for vehicles. Maybe we can listen and see.
Other questions, your comments? If not, this item requires a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the Council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on this item.
Motion to deny the request.
Motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, for the discussion.
I could just say that countless amounts of time and money by members of the city staff and the public have worked to make our corridors through Temple nice to look at and friendly to certain types of businesses. And while we certainly are pro-business in Temple, sometimes there are different areas in town that are more appropriate for different kinds of businesses, and I think this is a perfect example of that.
Anything else? Being known, we have motion second to deny the request to change to the Plan Development O1. And if there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item number nine is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance establishing the prima facie speed limit on State Highway 36 within the city limits. Mr. Newman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item for your consideration feels to change the posted speed limit along State Highway 36, right in front of the Clonan-Heller Airport. There's a school out there, it's the Temple Education Center. It's almost directly across from the new car station number 8 at the airport. And the state has looked at a traffic study and has recommended making changes to the speed limit from 60 miles an hour, which is posted currently, and down to 50. And then during the school hours, when they'll be flashing lights, they'll be down to 35. Staff concurs with the recommendation, and this item does require a public hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Is that 35 all day when school is in session, or just when?
Just when, you know, typically 7 to 9 in the morning, 3 to 4 in the afternoon. But we'll work out those hours within, you know, setting that up.
Well, otherwise, it's changing the speed limit to 50 miles an hour on that four-lane, the five-lane road?
Yes, sir.
It'll be similar to Central Techers Christian School along 93.
I don't know what the posting is, but-
Well, that same concept.
Will they have flashing lights and so forth?
Yes, we'll be installing the flashing lights, or when it goes to 35 miles an hour. The speed zone is 4 tenths of a mile, where it'll be down to 50, and then during the time it's flashing, it's really 1 tenth of a mile, so.
Does the 4 tenths of a mile include the entrance to the airport and also to the car station?
Right. If you look at the map that's attached, the entrance to the airport will not be affected. But it would be, that 50 mile an hour speed zone would be very close to the same point the car station is.
The car station is.
They're not exactly across the street, they're a little catty corner, but they're very close.
The school is catty corner, but-
Yes.
The station H is right in the middle of the 50 mile an hour speed limit. What type of, when we put that new signage up there, is there going to be anything to call out that signage? A change there?
Well, you talk about the flasher itself?
Yes.
There'll be 16-foot tall flashers, they'll be solar powered, and they'll say school limit.
Well, that's for the school, but as far as just the change of the speed limit, is there anything we do to indicate that change? I mean, because that, that's obviously a high-speed, designed road.
Correct. And so, to comply with the MUTCB, we will be putting in the 50 mile an hour speed limits to get people to slow down for 24/7, but then when the flash was on, we can have short distance within a 50 mile an hour segment of speed zone.
But will there be any warning signs prior to, you know, reduce speed ahead, that will be posted ahead of the 50 mile an hour sign, irrespective of the school limit?
We can do that.
So, I just think that's a speed trap waiting to happen.
Running through the Temple sign.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. I just understand the school and that, but we just need to do everything we can to make sure we call attention to that change. You know, because I mean, if we're going to put it up, it needs to be enforced, but I'm, I know it's like 93, and it's a perfect example. So, 93 needs to be slower anyways, but that's a different subject.
Is it a requirement from the state that we have to do both, both the 50 mile an hour all the time and the-
Yes, you cannot step down your speed limit any more than 15 miles an hour, so therefore it goes from 60, 50, down to 35.
Okay.
Only during the time that it's flashing.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? This item does require a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the Council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments.
Jay Stotts, 2214 Park Square Lane. I'd like the Council to consider making that area exactly like 93 and have it have the 50 mile an hour, flashing also the 35 mile an hour, but not make it 24/7, because I agree with the mayor, that's going to be a speed trap. And it's not going to bode well for folks that are, you know, going up and down, coming in from the west, or going out to the west. It's, it's going to be, you know, something that's going to take a long time to get used to on a four-lane road. If it was narrow, I could understand, but if we could consider making both the 50 and the 30, you know, a flashing situation, that would be expensive there. But I travel that road quite often, and I gotta tell you, 60 miles an hour seems a little slow when we're out, you know, out there. So if we could, and if it's required at the 50 mile an hour, be, you know, 24/7, so be it, but can we do more and put a sign up? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stotts. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of the ordinance establishing the speed change to State Highway 36.
Motion to approve of the additional reduced speed signs that were mentioned in our discussion.
Okay. Motion is there second?
Second.
Motion is second for the change of speed limit with additional warning signs or indicators to indicate the change of speed down to 50 miles an hour prior to the speed changing. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Item 10 on our agenda, our board appointments, consider adopting a resolution appointing members to the following city boards and commissions. Building and Standards Commission, one alternate member to fill an expiring term through March 1st of 2013, and one alternate member to fill an expired term through March 1st of 2014. And then Building Board of Appeals, two members to fill expiring terms through March 1st of 2016. The Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board, one member to fill an expiring term through March 1st of 2015. Council, entertain recommendations on these items. Building and Standards Commission, two-year terms, and we have two alternate positions to appoint. Is there a recommendation?
Alan Horn for one. I guess technically that would be the unexpired term through March 1st of 2014, if the other one is available to-
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, it's recommended that Mr. Alan Horn be considered or be proposed for the term that's expiring, March 1st of 2014? Okay, all right. Building Board of Appeals, we have two terms expiring, and both expiring terms are eligible for reappointment. And if there's no objection there, that'll be Michael Vansa and Philip Schneider, filling specific areas of expertise. Mr. Vansa on air conditioning, and Mr. Schneider is a builder at large. And so, they would be recommended for reappointment. And then on Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board, we have one term that's expiring, and is there a recommendation on that position?
Justice Bigby.
It's recommended that Justice Bigby be selected to fulfill the expiring, the eligible So if there's no objection, I'll intend to entertain a motion, those appointments as indicated, Mr. Alan Horn for Building and Standards Commission, alternate, Michael Vansa and Philip Schneider for Building Board of Appeals, and Mr. Justice Bigby for the Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, for discussion. For being known, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Thank you very much for your attendance and your participation. This meeting is adjourned.